I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Abington School Committee for today, Tuesday, August 27, 2013. We're going to start with saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Non visitors, seeing none, we'll move on to the reading and approval of the records from our June 18 meeting. Have a chance to take a look at those. Day changes or amendments to those from June 18. Our motion to approve the minutes of June 18, 2013, as presented.
Motion.
Kathy, second. Mike, in favor?
Aye.
Also, we're going to look for a motion to approve the executive session minutes of the same day, June 18, 2013. If this is amended. Kathy, second. Kathy, in favor?
Aye.
Before we get started with our meeting, I would like to welcome our new student rep, Michael Donahue. He's a senior at Abington High School, and he will be representing the students and the school for this coming school year. So, welcome, Michael. And I'll pass it off to Superintendent Chee.
Under Communication, in your packet you have information about the MAS- MasS- 47th Annual Joint Conference. That's the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, from November 6 to November 9, down in Hyannis. And last year Kathy and I went. There are a number of professional development offerings, informational sessions, keynote speakers, and anyone interested in going, just let us know, and we can register you. You can take a look at what things you might want to go to, and do all of them, or some of them, or none of them, depending on your pleasure. So, just to let us know.
Is there a deadline for registration for this?
I don't know if that form has it on it.
It doesn't have it on here, but it's usually sometime in October, middle of October.
Under Personnel Administration, Informational, before I talk about the personnel changes, I want to preface this with, you'll see, and I'll talk about some new appointments, some retirements, some leaves, but on balance, you'll see far more appointments than leaves and resignations or retirements. And that's because in previous school committee meetings, there was an acknowledgement of people who retired and left. The balance at the end of this, in terms of adding personnel, we didn't add 22 people to our ranks over the summer. We actually netted out in terms of full-time equivalency to zero additional. When you couple in the people that left and the people that came, the sum is no additional full-time equivalency. That doesn't mean that we didn't improve some of our class numbers through some of these moves that were made, that I'll talk about when we do the update. We did improve our program at the Frollo. We did add a fourth grade teacher, but we did that because we lost two positions, people who were math tutors, over the summer. And I'll just run through that list, and then try to explain some of those moving pieces to you as we move forward. But I think it's important, because people at home, when they hear this, are going to hear a number of appointments, and please don't think that means that we found, we struck oil in the Abington Public Schools over the summer, or found gold. It's where we're managing our number that we received at the town meeting, and that's the number we're using in our salary accounts, and so the net effect overall is zero, in terms of the full-time equivalency of staff. So, I've accepted the resignation of Nicole De Benedene as a math teacher at Abington High School. I've accepted the resignation of Leanne Doyle as an adjustment counselor. Accepted the resignation of Catherine Goyette as a speech and language pathologist. Accepted the resignation of Jonathan Mahyle as a tutor. Accepted the resignation of Stephanie Scafidi as a special education teacher. Accepted the resignation of Brittany Yelsey as a tutor. Appointed Christine Puglisi as the assistant principal at Beaver Brook Elementary School. Approved the appointment of Sherry Fedorowitz as the elementary director of curriculum instruction and assessment. Approved the appointment of Allison Davenport as a speech and language pathologist. Approved the appointment of Jenna Pelletier as a speech and language pathologist. Approved the appointment of the following: Samantha Maffeo, full-time temporary one-year substitute; Lisa Matthews, full-time temporary one-year substitute; Gabrielle Carberry, special education teacher; Carrie Di Lorenzo, recess lunch paraprofessional; Kelly Klimpa as a school psychologist; Allison Lyden as a special education teacher; Cheryl Marquardt as a special education teacher; Amy McGrath as a grade-two teacher; Laura Monaschino as a team chair; Catherine Martin as a paraprofessional; Karen Shiplett as a .8 wellness teacher. At the Frollo Middle School, I've approved the appointment of Diana Flaherty as a foreign language teacher; Stephanie Reynolds as a substitute guidance counselor; and Jillian Smith as a .4 foreign language teacher. At Abington High School, I've approved the following appointments: Nicoletta Sella as a math teacher; James Donahue as a special education teacher; Janet Meehan as a foreign language teacher; Michelle Poirier as an art teacher; James Robbins as a team chair; Christine Stolgittas as a nurse. And approved the appointment of the advisors for the 13-14 school year. In your packet, you have a list of advisors. Those are stipended positions. And then the recommendation of Teresa Sullivan at the high school. I've approved the following appointment of coaches and volunteer coaches. That list is also attached. Granted Angela Amancio, a speech and language pathologist with the Abington Public Schools, a parental leave of absence, in accordance with option A, as stipulated under 24. And then Kathleen Ward, a foreign language teacher, a leave of absence in accordance with options B and A, as stipulated under 24 of the NDA agreement. And approved the following recommendations from the principals for professional teacher status, beginning with this coming school year: Jane Ryder, Maggie Giles, Jillian Earl, Andrea Doian, and Thea Schostek. And over the summer, as we had hoped and discussed, and for this coming school year, what we were able to do is add a foreign language teacher at the Frollo Middle School through the savings of retirement dollars and offsets in the salary account. And we were also able to add a fourth grade teacher to reduce those class sizes in grade four. And we did that by those savings that I was talking about in retirements. Someone leaves at a higher salary, and you hire someone at a lower step, because they're new to the profession, and the balance, you save money there. And we also lost two math tutors at the Beaver Brook Elementary School, and so we combined their salaries to help absorb the cost of these teachers. And in the end, provide smaller class sizes and a better program of studies for students at the Frollo, because adding that foreign language class isn't just adding foreign language for our seventh graders, it's taking students out of study hall and giving them the full, or a fuller schedule at the Frollo Middle School. There are still some study halls there. To not have foreign language in your seventh grade is wrong. Now we have that. But also, the students are now placed more appropriately on teams, which creates smaller learning environments for middle school students coming out of the elementary school, because for the first time, they've got seven different teachers, they're traveling from room to room, and the teachers can design instruction in a way that's more consistent and more seamless for the middle school students. So, those two positions were huge, and we're excited that we're able to do those things. And because we're very responsible with the dollars, the net effect in terms of full-time equivalency, as I said, is zero additional staff, net.
Would the class sizes go in the fourth grade from two?
They were going to be 31, and now they're at 27, 28, depending on the room. 26, 27, depending on the room.
Can I just say the significance of the professional teacher status?
Yeah. After three full years in Massachusetts, a teacher is granted professional teacher status, which means that the way that they're evaluated has changed. They're evaluated less frequently. They're still evaluated annually, and we'll talk a little bit about the new evaluation cycle. One year could be through a goal-setting alternative evaluation, another year it would be through more classroom observations. And they're given additional rights under Massachusetts general laws in terms of their employment. And those are really the two major distinctions.
Is this something that, like, in the past, used to call like a tenure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
And then just one other quick question. On the advisors, what is the student account bookkeeper? I'm just curious what that, there were two positions there.
We charge a fee to our students to participate in a number of activities. There's a lot of money that moves, that they help us account for.
And when all the clubs and classes, senior class, junior class, when they raise money, that money isn't held by, it's not, doesn't go into the general fund for the town or for the school department. It's actually held in what's called a student activity account, and that's managed by the bookkeepers. So, there's one at the high school, and there's one at the Frollo.
Okay. And in terms of the number of transactions that they have to make, I can tell you, it's a couple hundred dollars for quite a bit of work.
It's, and it's something that's, the books are audited, and they're held, there's money, it's held by the town, by the town of Abington, a portion of it, and then a portion is held in a checkbook within the schools.
So, it's got the appropriate checks and balances to maintain the integrity of the dollars, and you can track them.
Okay. Now, is that just a?
Which I'm saying to an auditor.
Well, yeah, that's kind of why I said when I started accounting, bookkeepers, kind of, I was excited about it. But as far as the transa, is it just a checkbook system, or is it automated?
No, it's, it's actually governed by Massachusetts general law, and what we have is, there's a handbook that, actually, it's a set of policies, that hold a certain amount of money on the town side. And then, so, for example, the Abington High School might have $20,000 in the savings account that's held by the town, by the town treasurer. And then they may have up to $20,000 in their checking account that's held at the school. So, there are actually two separate accounts. The town side account is reconciled by the school department accountant, as well as town hall, and the checkbook is reconciled by the school bookkeeper. And then the checkbook is replenished via the warrant process from the savings account, if you will, on the town side.
And it's very restrictive in terms of what the expenditures can be for.
Correct. It's called a student activities account, and the only thing that can be held in there is money that is raised or collected by and for students, and it can only be spent by and for stu, or for students.
Yeah.
And any expenditure is requested by, for example, by an advisor, it's approved by the principal, and then the check is written, and then when they have the reimbursement, it actually comes through my office. I get copies of the receipts and the invoices, and approve the transfer of money from the savings account back into the checkbook.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Under Other Matters of the Back to School Report, and the good news is, we had our first day of school today, and there were any number of challenges that I could spend more time than you want me to on. You know, we had a leak at the Woodsdale the week before school started in the main hallway. Transportation is always a challenge when you're moving up to 2,000 students, 2,000 families, students around town. Food service program, later in the gym, you'll see, we had to go up on our lunch prices. To say nothing of the custodial work, the schedules, the reimaging of computers and the technology, and you have to imagine that every single thing in a room gets taken out of a room, the room gets cleaned, and then things go back in the room. Environments are tested and inspected. We've got building inspections, we've got fire department inspections, we have environmental inspections for asbestos, we do water checks of different taps for lead in the water. The rigor that the classrooms, which is a good thing, undergo in terms of getting ready is so much more, the standard is so much higher than what you see in your homes. And again, it's a good thing, because we're responsible for the life, health, safety of children. But the amount of work that gets done by dedicated people in Abington to make sure that we're ready for today is just something I admire every single year. And we had a shorter summer this year, because we lost a week, because we had to make up time at the end of last year for the snow, and the opening of school last year was difficult because of the storm we had at the opening. And so, there are a number of changes that we're implementing this year also. We're implementing a new teacher evaluation tool. We're excited about that. We had a new teacher orientation day. I'm excited about the new people that are starting with us this year. And so, in your packet, you have information about all of those things that took place, from the agenda in the new teacher evaluation day, to the meetings that took place at Abington High School, and then throughout the district. Yesterday, prior to the opening, we had open houses that night, and we had a building committee meeting that night, which you all attended, spent quite a bit of time there. The rollout of the technology for the new teacher evaluation system is impressive. And all of the students came to school. I want to thank the police department, because as I drove around this morning, the district, there were a number of police cars slowing the commuters down, making it a safer environment for our kids to get to school. The highway department did quite a bit of work in terms of helping us get ready for the opening also. I want to thank them and recognize them. And this is the point where I'm afraid I'm leaving somebody out, so if I'm rambling.
You got them on mine.
You got them on yours. So, I, we had a good opening of school, because those, all of those students came today, also got home safely, and in between, I believe that they had a good day. It was in all the buildings today, I talked to all the principals today, and they all felt the same way. So, there are always, every single year, you know, one or two families aren't happy with their bus stop, or that the buses ran too slowly today. I know you're going to, I must tell you, Thunder, Felicia, you're going to talk about people taking pictures probably at bus stops this morning that slow the buses down.
I can do it now while we're talking about it.
If you want.
I would just like to remind people that the first, probably, two weeks of school, the buses are not on a regular schedule. We have students that sign up for the bus, or don't sign up for the bus, or at bus stops. We have students that are required to transport, and their parents end up driving them, but we still have to stop at their stop. In the first two weeks, the routes really are not how they'll be for the rest of the year. We, today, our last bus was quite late. It was late leaving Beaver Brook and late getting home, and because it backs up when it's a little bit late from the Frollo High School route, and a little bit late from Woodsdale, by the time it gets to the Beaver Brook, it's that much later. I'll also say that at Beaver Brook, a lot of time is spent making sure that the students get on, are in the right bus line, that they get on the correct bus. Every bus tag is checked for the first few days, so it is a much longer process. In the morning, the same thing. I received a number of calls that their student didn't get to school till 9:05 or 9:10, and like I remind them, if they took a picture of their student getting on the bus, and it took 30 seconds, and there's 60 kids getting on the bus, times 30 seconds each, that adds 30 minutes to the route. So, so those things happen the first few days. So, I would, I would please ask people to wait a week or two before they make a decision as to whether they want their child to continue on the school bus.
Can I ask a question while we're talking about getting to and from school? In the crosswalks, the cones or the barrels that are there, those are put out by the police department?
Police department, correct.
And do they, are they out there all the time, 24 hours?
I actually spoke with Officer Garrity today, and he, there's a number of the please stop for, you know, make state law to stop, there's a number of them throughout town, and they'll actually be moved to different crosswalks. There isn't one for every crosswalk, so he'll be moving those to different areas throughout town during the school day, the school week, I guess, to remind people about crosswalks.
So, if you normally see one, say, on 139, and it happens to not be there, it could be that just got moved somewhere?
It could be moved, or it could have gotten hit.
Right.
But it's still the state law, that if there's someone in a crosswalk, whether there's a sign or not, if there's a crosswalk, it's a state law that you have to stop.
Will we eventually have them per, like, you know?
That, I, that's the, that's the problem.
One of the things that we see every year is, you know, the commuters are used to traveling back and forth to work for 10 weeks without the schools being open, and they just, they move faster. And now, they'll, the commuters that take the routes that go by schools or go by bus routes will train themselves to either take a different route, because the bus or the school is open or in transition while they're going by, or they'll get accustomed to the fact that they need to slow down in those areas. And so, we see that. Today was the first day of that. We see it every year, and those are a part of that, reminding people and warning people. And the police department, I have to give them credit, they had that meter out in front of the Frollo for the last week, monitoring people's radar when you drive by that slows them down. And those officers out in front of those schools, the multiple schools today, you know, did the same thing, depending on the school building.
I think one other thing, I've received a number of questions around how many stops or where the stops are, or why would I travel 139 as a bus stopping, you know, at various places. And our practice, what we try to do is, the younger the grade, the more often the stops, the less they have to travel to a bus stop. Doesn't mean it's door-to-door, but the more frequent the stops are, the younger the grade. By the time they get to the middle and the high school, we do more what are called neighborhood stops. So, everyone that lives on a street will walk to an end of the street, and there'll be one pickup for a number of homes. That's not to say that it isn't in front of somebody's house, because it is in front of somebody's house, but it's not purposely, you know, we don't say, oh, we're going to put it in front of Felicia Michele's house. It's, this is where the neighborhood stop is. So, you know, depending on the time of day you travel 139, you may see a bus stop every intersection, or you might see them go a longer distance, depending on which school they're picking up for. And that's always a question that we receive every year around, why isn't the bus stopping, you know, in front of my house or at my house?
Because, you know, the more bus stops, obviously, the more time it takes. The more time it takes, the longer the rides become, the longer the rides become. Eventually, we have to add additional equipment. The cost of a bus can be $30,000 or $40,000. And so, we try to create a consist-
To rent. We don't, we don't buy the bus, to rent.
We try to create, you know, a consistently safe environment around the entire town, but the problem is, is that even the cul-de-sac that doesn't have any traffic at any given moment can be the most dangerous street in the town of Abington, depending on the conditions or the people operating vehicles on that road. So, we really need parents to be aware of their children's route to bus stops, routes to school, and they need to make decisions throughout winters that, you know, keep in mind the safety of their children, so. Because there's no way, any given time, you can anticipate all the different roads and sidewalks in the community. In your packet, you've got a copy of the educator evaluation system. We spent 40 hours, 50 hours, 60 hours, multiple meetings, a lot of time on this document. All school systems in Massachusetts have to be implementing this system, tailor-made for their community this year. Some systems started it last year, raced to top communities. What this means is there'll be more frequent observations of teachers by people who will be working with them around goal setting and using student data to set those goals to improve teaching learning for students. It's done more electronically than ever before. We're actually very proud of this document. It is, as I said, 104 pages, so I will not page through it with you tonight, but I will tell you that this is going to be a huge improvement in terms of the evaluation system that we're currently using in Massachusetts, and I believe it'll improve achievement for our students. In this, after that packet, there are two more items. I may go a little bit of out of order. I just want to, before I move off the opening day and move, ask you for a motion on this MOA. I included my goals, which is just a draft copy as of August 1, which I gave a draft to people in the system. This is not a final version, but I just wanted to, I won't read it tonight, but I just wanted to highlight it to you now, so that you had an opportunity to take a look at it and digest it, so that when we come back at another meeting, it'd be something that you'd be able to consider. And then, just back a page, I've got to ask you to consider approving the memorandum of agreement between the Abington Education Association and the Abington School Committee. That is the document that outlines how we're going to get this 104-page document done successfully in the Abington Public Schools. It's something that you've already seen. You approved it in executive session, but according to the attorney, what we're required to do is, it must be approved in public session, basically because it's a contractual money item. And in a conversation that I had, you want to share with people the question concerning number eight?
Yeah. No, you can, you can, you want to take it?
Well, I appreciate the fact that Paul Hagerty pointed out that in this agreement, under number eight, the parties will collaboratively develop job descriptions for mentors, peer assistants, to be completed by August 1, 2013. That has not been completed yet. That's nobody's fault. We're still in negotiations or discuss, they're not even negotiations or discussions about the clarity of language around those, because this is really the document that'll outline, that is the negotiation document. The negotiation's done. Now, we just have to come up with a clear language that provides those job descriptions. So, the suggestion was that I ask, and I think it's a good one, that you approve this document, which you previously approved in executive session, with the one amendment that the parties will, number eight will read, "The parties will collaboratively develop the job descriptions for the mentors and peer assistants," period. And we leave off the date. We're actually meeting with the association tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, to talk about that.
Can you be to make a motion to amend that, just to take out, to end it after assistance and eliminate to be completed by August 1, 2012, 2013?
If someone wanted to make a motion to accept as presented with that amendment, that would be great.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yes? opposed? Great, thank you.
Now, is that just on that, do we then have to agree to the vote on the document itself?
No.
No. You just agreed to it as amended.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we were agreeing to amendment, and then we have to-
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I meant it to be this-
Agreed, yeah. Motion to approve the memorandum as amended.
As amended, okay, all right. And then the next item I have for you is the medication policy, which I'm going to ask that on the medication policy, it's something we talked about last year. It's something that complies with the Department of Public Health's recommendations and the recent legislation around allowing students to carry items such as EpiPens and asthma inhalers, depending on the physician's prescription and a nurse that's, and a plan that's developed with our school nurses. But there's just a, there's some language, consistency of language changes that we've talked about, and then Paul had asked, I think, a very good question about, under procedure, number three, the order includes, but is not limited to, the bullet that notes a diagnosis and any other medical conditions requiring medication, and then it goes on to say, "If not a violation of confidentiality or not contrary to the quest of a parent, guardian, or the student to be confidential." I don't want to speak for you, but I think a good question was, well, if you're somebody dispensing medicine, we understand that there's a right to privacy and confidentiality, but you don't want to mix medications with something somebody else is on and be responsible for that. So, I'm just looking for some guidance from some medical people on that and what that means. Before I bring it back to ask you to approve it, so if it's okay, I'd like to ask just to table it for another month. In the interim, should we need to use, should we have a situation that we need to address, we'll just use the regulations, and we'll use what DPH has provided, because the regulations really trump policy anyway. Laws and regulations trump your policies. And so, we'll just, we'll use that as our guide.
We anticipate this being played up by next month?
Yep. I just, I'd rather- I just, I'd rather do it right than do it fast and get that figured out. And then, ask if you would accept the donation from the Abington Music Parents Association. Appreciate that they've provided five thousand dollars, and that helps to pay for tutors and program after-school for our students. Those, those tutors are important, because we have large group music instruction around, with our, with instruments, and without the ability to break it down into subsets of instruments, students wouldn't receive appropriate instruction. If they didn't receive appropriate instruction at the elementary levels with their assistants, we wouldn't have a band. How'd I do?
You got it. I'll make that motion. Second motion.
And then, under dates to remember, oh, I'm sorry. Do we take the vote?
I, I made a motion, did so.
I second it.
Kathy seconded.
And then, dates to remember, Friday, August thirtieth, all schools are closed, grades one through twelve. Monday, September second, Labor Day, all school offices and buildings will be closed. Tuesday, September third, kindergarten begins. Sunday, September eighth, is the Jeffrey Coombs Memorial Road Race at the Woodsdale School. Registration begins at seven thirty AM, and the race begins at nine. On Sunday, September fifteenth, we have the Music Parents Craft Fair at Abington High School, ten AM to four PM. On Thursday, September nineteenth, we have an in-service early release day. And something, I'll just add now, under, which I was gonna note under informational, we also have, while I'm doing dates, we have the AEF Golf Tournament on Monday, September twenty-third, at eight AM at Riverbend. And there's a brochure for that in your pamphlets, in your packets, and-
Joint School Committee Board of Selectmen?
We have a Joint School Committee Board of Selectmen meeting on September ninth, here in the Paul K. Smith Room at six thirty.
Not Paul K. Smith.
I'm sorry, in the Cottar Room.
Can I just ask a procedural question? At the, in the executive session, there were three votes taken, and we only addressed one of those. Do we have to vote on the other two?
We do not have to vote, I think you talked about the insurance letter. I double-checked on the conversation that we had asking about that. We do not have to do that, because that's not a money item.
Okay.
And the other items were-
The job description, I think, was that?
Yeah, we have a job description coming up on the agenda.
This is a special education team chairperson job description?
And the team chairperson, we were double-checking. We can do, we can do that at, at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying from procedure, like, if we vote in executive session, do we have to vote everything?
No, some, I double-checked our conversation, and basically, it comes down to contractual money items need to be done here. Job descriptions need to be done here. The other items, some of those other side letters do not need to be done. Thank you. Good questions.
Report of subcommittees, we have none this evening, so we'll launch a report of assistance for superintendent, people, personnel services.
Great, thank you. I am asking for a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen school year. As you know, that these change every month. Sometimes I come with somebody else that has requested. And the procedure with the homeschool is they have a whole documentation packet that they need to fill out. We check to make sure that all of the documentation is in. We approve that, the educational piece, and then we come forward here requesting for final approval, and then the families get that final approval and move forward on their homeschool education. They also have to provide us by intermittently throughout the year and at the end of the school year, the assessments that they use also with the education program that they choose. And many of them choose online program, and that already comes with built-in testing assessments. So, this evening, you have this confidential form, and it's fourteen students on here. There's one in kindergarten, three in third grade, one in fourth grade, one in sixth grade, two in seventh grade, two in ninth grade, two in tenth grade, and two in eleventh grade. Any questions on that? I know you'll hear me, sometimes we could go the whole year without having anybody new, because everybody makes sure that if they're starting off the year doing homeschooling, but every once in a while, you will have families that decide, partway through the year, that they would like to choose homeschooling, and so they go through the process, and then I would come back to the committee at the monthly meeting to request approval. Okay, so if I could have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Great, thank you. The next is also a motion to approve the job description for department heads as presented. And this is new in our negotiation contract in terms of the department head title for English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Engineering Technology, as well as History and Social Science. And basically, as you read through, I don't need to read through all of it, because you see the duties of the position. Basically, the position responsibility really sums it up. It's to provide leadership in the development, implementation, coordination, evaluation, and innovation of the district's curriculum instruction and assessment. This position is an evaluative position, and the department heads will participate in the evaluation of teachers in accordance with the teacher's contract. Any questions in this area? Okay, we're really excited about this, and they're very excited. They have been also a part of trainings that we've been doing throughout the summer, as well as yesterday, and we'll be working with them all year, so we're really excited about this.
I have a quick question to, so for, we're talking Fro Leo and the high school. Would we have one for math?
Correct.
So, we're not gonna have one for each building?
Right, so Meg Dougherty is the math department head. She would be overseeing Fro Leo as well as the high school. And they have meetings with their departments throughout the year. The difference here is, the distinction is, we had directors, and then we have department heads. And so, the department head, the distinction is they're part of the evaluation process, which is a part of the whole new educator eval tool. Kathy Bailey was also a part of having those conversations, so thanks, Kathy.
Can I just, speaking of that, as far as evaluating, I know when you're reading that, it says department heads can't spend less than twenty percent of the time in classroom and not more than eighty. How is that monitored and just reviewed to see that the department head, like, there's one department head isn't working, you know, having twenty percent of the time in classroom, someone else is at seventy or eighty percent? How is that?
It comes under the principal and the assistant principals. And they do closely monitor that, simply because they set the schedules for the year, so they know what they're teaching, as well as they're going in and they're working with departments, and then certain staff members. And there's also parts where they'll be doing observations as well as evaluations. So, that one in particular is closely monitored, because if you have a department head not doing their job, it falls on the principal and the assistant principal. So, in particular with that, they need to really have a close monitor on that. And at the secondary level, it's, it's almost easy to monitor because of scheduling. They teach classes certain periods of the day, they're then out in buildings, they're doing evaluations. And we have, we're very fortunate, we have highly skilled people in these positions. So, if anything, they go well above and beyond, so we're very fortunate.
It's actually already, it's actually similar to the language you already have for them. It's not, that's not a major shift. And there may be times when someone teaches forty and somebody else teaches sixty, because this person has ten people to evaluate, and this person has four or five. Or the program offering shifts at Abington High School, and you need to accommodate students' needs first. So, you need to open up an extra calculus section or whatever it is that you're doing, not extra, nothing's extra, but you know what I mean?
And it, and it's also twenty percent is one class. So, it's, they teach, twenty percent is one class a day, or, and eighty percent is four classes a day. So, just looking at a secondary schedule.
So, do we get a, a motion?
If I could have a motion, sorry, thank you, to approve the job description for department heads as presented.
Make that motion?
Great, thank you. Then, for informational purposes, you have the update on the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, federal and state grants. So, you see the comparison between last year for two thousand and thirteen versus this year in two thousand and fourteen. And you see that the difference is that we have a decrease of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, that will be something that we take into account when we're writing our grants, as well as our funding for professional development, et cetera, but that is offset.
One of the things that happened over the summer, it happened the same week, is we learned, like, everyone else, that the federal government was cutting back on money. And so, in the beginning part of the week, we learned this, and at the end of the week, we learned that the state of Massachusetts had audited the FY twelve homeless transportation submission and reimbursement, and that they are providing an additional fifty thousand, thirty-one dollars to the Abington Public Schools that we could spend in this coming fiscal year. So, one day, we were looking for who are we gonna cut to make up for this money, and a couple of days later, it was answered by the state coming in with more money. Just an example of how the budget number is a fluid number all of the time. For example, today, you know, we've only had one day experience with special education. I can't tell you that the placements that we anticipated for this year are gonna be, you know, what, what we'll end up with at the end of the year. I know there'll be changes, to what degree, I don't know, and that's something that changes daily, so.
And all of this also isn't salary. Into our grants, there's also professional development, there's expenses, there's-
Yep.
And that's a big piece, the professional development piece, because there was a significant loss, if you look. But the offset of the homeless reimbursement helps with funding our professional development.
And we would hope in following years, the federal funding would go back up, and that would be, those would be operational dollars we can count on. And we don't know that the homeless transportation reimbursement will be something that we'll see every year.
Right.
What's it, nine four one four two?
All these have just titles. We have Title One, we have SED, we, well, special education, we have academic achievement, Title One, two seventy-four grant. So, all of them have specifications in terms of grant needs. And then, you see the early education and care. And then, we also have, currently, we have people that are working on a science, hopefully that will get a science grant. And we're also looking at a grant for the new teacher evaluation. So, the big one, as you see, is SED. When you look at the five hundred and eight thousand, three forty-five versus this year, four hundred and ninety-four, five oh seven. So, that's special education. So, we do have a significant amount of salaries that are paid out of that, as well as some professional development.
I believe ninety-four one forty-two is some federal legislation that provided that amount of money to states for special education students.
Okay, that's the legislation.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, what did it's-
The number.
Yeah, what did, what did it stand for?
I think I'm up with that number.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's the chapter, it's the chapter and section of the federal law.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, I think it's, it's also important to note that when you do look at our preliminary budget book, for example, in January, the salaries that are listed in there aren't, those are only the salaries that are paid for out of the general fund, out of the school department allocation from the town, because we already taken, we take an offset for what we anticipate we will get in grants. The last number of years that has, you know, we've anticipated that being level funded. So, that's already taken off before our budget is even presented.
Great, thanks. And then, the next is professional development focus for this year. We had a wonderful opening yesterday. We probably overwhelmed most of the room, because there's so many initiatives taking place at the state level, level, as well as the district level. However, everybody comes back happy on the first day of school, so that's when you share everything that's going to be taking place throughout the year. So, we did a lot just in terms of the Abington educator evaluation system, and with that is the whole online baseline edge programming that's going to be used, as well as our new Abington Public Schools web-based professional development, Abington PD. I don't know if you've been on our website recently, but that's on there. And Teresa Minahan has worked hard with Ann Silva, and we are ready to go. And so, the staff are actually logging on, changing their passwords, and they're going to be using that platform, and it's going to generate and really focus on efficiency, because all of our professional development points, all of our, anything that has to do with professional development will now be stored here, so that you can go on as an individual staff member and see from here on out, you know, what you've been doing within the Abington Public Schools, as well as outside district professional development. And it'll carry your own transcript, so that when you go to do recertification and licensure, you just press the button, you're able to submit that as well to the State Department with your recertification fund. So, we're really excited about this. It's going to take a while, but it's just a new initiative that people are going to get used to. And all the PDPs that Teresa has been tracking over the years, this will actually be so much more efficient for her. And also, when people say, I lost it, I'm going to try to recertify, you know, Teresa has to go back and track different things. So, here, it'll be all there. It'll also remind you of your IPDIP, which is your individual professional development plan, that's also due. And so, we're really looking forward to this rollout.
And who will be responsible for putting, so you take a professional development, who's gonna put those in your transcript?
So, you have to go on, so if it's me, I would go on and I would log on, using my own password, et cetera, and then I would sign up for certain whatever programs. It could be in-service, we now have to track all our in-service programs, so that whatever we do on that first in-service day, it's going to go in here, and every staff member that will be receiving PDPs has to also go in and sign up, that they're taking that during the in-service day. Now, sometimes, we have complete, you know, district-wide in-service, so it'll be everybody sign up for the same. And then, there are times where we have department meetings, we have other different things going on with the elementary versus the secondary. But you would go on, you would log on, but then there's a piece, if you look at the website, there's still the internal approval forms that have to be filled out, because the web-based programming is, is being accessed by every, you know, state and every town, but everybody has their own way of doing the accounting piece. And until the web base comes up with a program, we're still using the inter-office mail for the approval pieces. But everything will be on this, it'll be your responsibility, and then Teresa will then, it'll automatically spit back the professional development points. But it'll take some getting used to, because we wanna make, first of all, it's something new. And for staff that have been here a long time, they're used to kinda like the Pony Express, where we have to do everything through paper, and then it goes to the superintendent's office, and it goes back, whereas this is going to be really online. So, it's exciting, it's exciting, and it really is about efficiency. It really is. Even though this is a small district, I mean, it's, you have over two hundred and some odd employees, and so, when they're all asking you for certain things, you know, Teresa gets the phone calls. So, it, it really will build the efficiency that we're looking for, so we're excited about that. And then, there's a lot of, of regular professional development that we have going on in terms of, you know, our relationship with collaboratives such as North Rivers, such as Reed's. Also, if we want to take courses through there, we would do the same thing. You would go on and log on through this Abington PT Smart EDU platform. But we have the educator eval, Edwin Analytics, you have discrete trial teachings, studying skillful teaching, data coaching, crisis prevention, as well as a variety of special education for assessments and report writing, and then formative assessments and summative assessments, which is also part of the whole evaluation tool. So, there's a lot of PD that will be going on, but we're excited about it. We have a lot of in-service time, as well as faculty time, grade level time, superintendent's time is going to be used to address all of these needs as well. So, any questions about that? Great, and then, we have our summer curriculum work. You got to see the listings. I do wanna thank all the staff who participated in the summer curriculum workshops. We had a variety of people that did a variety of work, as you can see, at all different levels. We had integrating technology into the content areas, transition seminars for freshmen, advisory program, curriculum development, media production, the everyday math with the Common Core standards. As you know, that's been a big change for us as well, and so, everyone has been making those changes to their content areas. Then, we have storytelling materials, comprehension, data teaming, AP European history curriculum, algebra, geometry, math assessments, there's a variety. You see them at all different levels, with English, vertical teaming and developing freshman curriculum, Wilson Foundations, senior expository writing curriculum, junior English curriculum, sophomore English curriculum. Lots of changes specifically with the English and the math, especially with the Common Core, so hence why you see a lot more in those areas, because there have been significant changes. So, I wanna thank again all the staff that did partake in that.
And then, all these items have a product that's posted on the network that other teachers can access and use. So, it benefits not only people that created them, but then it's applied it to, for other people.
Correct. And then, the last piece is the extended school year summer program, which falls under special education. And so, every summer, we run a- special education, and so, every summer, we run a summer school program for students on IEPs, and we, it's for five weeks, and it's really individualized in small groups, and this year, we had one hundred and seven referred and sixty-seven attend. So, that's something that all districts go through, because there's the referral process, parents will say, "Yes, it's part of the IEP process," but then, it depends on how many students actually come, that is up to the parents. So, it's very individualized, it's small group, it's five weeks, and there's a variety from, you know, the teachers that are there, as well as the parents, but also occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, all of those service providers are also there to meet the needs of our students. So, it went really well, and the kids love it, and the parents are great, but we do plan for one hundred and seven, because we have to, but when sixty-seven comes, they get more individualized for it. So, it works out.
And if I could just say, you know, someone that I know that's near and dear to me, that goes through the program, and I can say, in the last couple of years, like, there has been one morning that this little guy doesn't mind going, and which, which means a testament to everybody in the program, which is excellent, because he, you know, you figure during the summer, one would rather stay home, and he doesn't mind going in, and that's really, you know, and I thank everybody that's involved in that, because they make it fun, and he gets something out of it, which is great.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
I'll say.
I'll say, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
All right. The first item I have for you is the school lunch price increase. We were notified, actually, August ninth, over the summer, that, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that due to something called the Equity in Meal Pricing, which is a new process that takes into account the cost per year meal, the free and reduced lunch, students, the number of meals you sell, how much your meals cost, how much your, the cost to produce the meals, they do a formula, and it spits out how much you have to charge for your lunch, equity in meal pricing. This, previously, we charged two dollars and forty cents. This coming year, we have to charge two dollars and fifty, two dollars and fifty cents, a ten cent increase, which, I'll just say that, and then, the milk prices will stay the same. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the increase in school lunches. I just want to reiterate that this is not something that we like to do over the summer. If we're increasing lunch prices, we want to do that in the spring, but with this new program and process, it takes to the end of the year to collect your data, to then make, to then figure out your equity in pricing. I will say that, I know the next, a reasonable question may be, what will happen next year to our school lunches, and I can't say that for sure. There is a chance that it would go up the following year based on this, but it may not. And if you go, the second question I can reasonably anticipate is, what if you didn't increase the lunches? And that would impact our reimbursement rate. We get reimbursed from the state for every meal that we sell, and then, we get a full reimbursement for our students who receive a free lunch.
When was the last time it increased, do you know?
Two years ago, yep.
Can I just ask, just a quick, the form that was in the packet said something about collecting sales tax on adult...
On adult meals.
How does that, how does that work, and just briefly?
It's very, it's very easy now, because of our computerized system. Felicia Michelle goes in to buy lunch, I have either, if I put money on my account, I actually get a four-digit code, just like the students do, but identifies me as an adult, and if I don't, if I'm going to pay cash, they do it as an adult meal. When the Food Service Director runs his report daily and monthly, it says how many adult meals were purchased, and you pay six point two five percent on the adult meals that are purchased.
And then, would you, do you have to remit the money?
We remit it, actually, to Leo Provost and the Treasurer's Office, and then that gets electronically transferred to the state.
Is that something new, that as far as charging the sales tax?
No.
Oh, it's always been?
Not since I've been, since I've been involved, it's, yep.
Thank you.
Are we talking about lunch, or the online system? Will you be starting that again?
Yeah, it's up and running. We've been getting deposits all summer.
They get new numbers? Are they supposed to remember?
Nope, they have their numbers for twelve years.
How do you get their numbers?
I was at Beaverbrook today, where, and the second graders were so excited when they remembered their numbers, and if they didn't, the person doing the register just typed in the student's last name and reminded them of their PIN, and they were then very excited. I would highly, highly recommend and encourage families to use the online payment. There is a charge, the company charges a fee to make an online deposit, that's nothing that the school department gets, that's a service provided by NutraKids, but to not have kids fiddling around with change in their pocket, and not having to get change, it is seamless, they go in, they put in their four-digit code, and it deducts it right, right from their account. There's also, apparently, I haven't seen the article, but there was an article in the newspaper recently about towns that had, again, huge balances in food service programs of students who hadn't paid, and we have not run into that problem. We had the policy last year that students could, could purchase a number of meal, I could get a number of meals kind of charged, and then they would have an alternative meal of cheese and fruit and milk, and, you know, we don't want a child not to have a school, have a lunch, but we can't also afford to go into that big deficit, and we haven't had that problem.
What is the policy of practice as far as if a child doesn't have a lunch? Or a child has a lunch, and they don't want to eat it? Like, I'm just trying to, like...
It really depends on the age level. I know that when I've been at Beaverbrook, and, you know, they're more excited to go out to recess than they may be to eat lunch, but there are people walking around the cafeteria, monitoring that, and encouraging children to eat. I have actually been with the principal in the past years, that she's called parents while we were there, saying, you know, "Your child didn't eat their lunch again today, just so you know." Not that they would necessarily catch it every day, because there's two hundred and odd children eating every lunch, but they would see it as a pattern. If a child comes through a lunch line and either doesn't have money on their account or forgets money, they can, at the elementary level, charge up to three lunches, and just gets debited, they have a negative balance on their account, and then, on the fourth lunch, they would get an alternative meal, which is a cheese sandwich, milk, and fruit. And they're also, they're charged for that, too, not a full meal price, but they are charged for that.
And at the secondary level, when you get kids that are unfortunately going through sometimes the precursors or into eating disorders, then you refer that to the guidance office and the nurse, and they work more closely and privately with the family and the student to try to overcome that.
I have a motion to approve the...
Look for a motion to approve the increase in school lunch from two dollars, forty cents, two dollars and fifty cents, beginning in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year.
Make the motion.
Kathy, second?
Second.
All, all table.
The other part of the food service program that's also worth noting is, we tried with not great success last year to have a breakfast program at the Frollo, and part of that was the timing of students coming into the building, when school started, but because of a number of factors, including the percentage of students that have lunch, we're talking about the Woodsdale School, the number of students who eat lunch there, a percentage of their total population, number of students that receive, receive either free or reduced lunch, and the number of those students who get a lunch every day, that's data that's all tracked and reported, we're required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to have a breakfast program at the Woodsdale School this year. So, that's still in the, in the kind of final planning phases. We will begin that sometime in October, that will be advertised, we're working with Mr. McCurtin, as well as the, Ms. Bernie Darcy, the Food Service Director, to come up with the plan of how to best facilitate a breakfast program at, at the Woodsdale School. And depending on the success of that, we will have to have that program, that's a mandated program for us to have, but it would, we would also like to extend that to other schools. There are very successful breakfast programs in many communities, and it's a, in many, for many families, it's also needed.
The activity that just the average family has these days, and the cost to put a meal in a bag and have somebody take it to school, and it's, I think, the food service program is an amazing job of being able to provide healthy, appealing, our student representative may not feel that our lunches are that good, I don't know what you think, but...
[laughing]
That's a good thing.
Which is very, the subline is very successful at Abington High School.
So, there've been a lot of changes in food service in the last couple of years.
Yeah, and I think that, that, you know, the regulations that have come down from the federal and state government regarding what you can serve in a school cafeteria has drastically impacted the food service programs across the state. You know, most of our prof, any money we made was made on ice cream and chips, and we can't sell those, and sugary, you know, powerade drinks, we can't sell those anymore. Thank you. Some, status of summer facility projects, I'm gonna repeat some of Peter's thank-yous, but Jason Lennon, the maintenance, his maintenance crew, Aaron Hire in the Technology Department, the head custodians and the building custodians within the schools, Carol Carney and Amp Hecker Raro work on the bus routes all summer, and, and get the tags out, and the routes run, Teresa Minahan, Paulette Batson, Lynette McNeil, and Deb Keough in, in our offices, just do an amazing amount of work in the summer. The Highway Department and Park and Rec, for the work that they do in helping us prepare our buildings, is immense, and the leadership at Town Hall, which we continue to grow and cultivate our relationship with them, and, and help our schools open successfully. Some of the kind of highlights of things that we have done this summer, some of projects that we pretty much are, are what is done in the summer, cleaning the buildings pretty much from top to bottom, all floors are cleaned, scrubbed, waxed. We do numerous safety and environmental testings throughout the summer. This summer, we had numerous installations of interactive whiteboards to continue to get to all classrooms having interactive whiteboards. We're not quite there yet, but we're, we're much, much closer. We continually have plumbing and electrical upgrades. For example, at Woodsdale, we were able to put in wireless urinals in the men, in the boys' rooms, which is very helpful in doing, believe me, I wouldn't believe, I wouldn't have believed it, but it is. Electrical upgrades, running, you know, wires for high-speed printers, and we, every summer, they reimagine computers, take computers out of rooms, reimagine computers, put newer computers, not new necessarily, but newer computers in various classrooms. As Peter said, almost every single computer in the course of the summer is moved from the location, it sits during the school year, moved down to a hallway or down a hall, and then put back into a classroom. We, this summer, improved wireless conductivity across the district. We're not to where we need to be, but we're, we're, we're increasing the conductivity within the buildings. And probably the biggest initiative, or one of the largest technology initiatives, is a managed print solutions with, across the district, so as we, in the past, every, almost every classroom had classroom printers in them, and the toner for those printers is very, very expensive. And we're moving to a system that will have high-speed printers in various locations throughout each school building. So, a teacher would send something to be printed, and it would go to a printer in a library, or a computer room, or down the end of the hallway, and they would, it would hold it in queue, they would then go to that printer and release it, release the job, and it gets printed while they're, while they're standing there. And the biggest part, and I'm really excited about this, but the average cost to print a piece of paper out of your classroom printer was twenty-five cents per page, and the cost to print from these high-speed printers is two tenths of a penny. So, in previous years, we've spent over thirty thousand dollars on toner for classroom printers. So, as printers are running out of toner, we're gonna phase out of buying toner for classroom printers, and be going to these, these networked printers, also be able to print to copy machines, which is also a very cheap way to print.
Another question, just while we're talking about this, but are we still participating in that base date textile recycling?
We are, we are. Yep, we're doing, we continue to receive, PTOs receive checks throughout the summer. There are bins in, at each of the school buildings, except the Frollo, because of the limited space there, the Frollo bins are actually at North School. So, as you're cleaning out your summer wardrobe, remember to drop your clothes off in the textile recycling bins, and that money goes directly to the school PTOs.
And those are anything, dirty, clean?
Anything.
Mismatched?
Mismatched, shoes, socks, ripped sweatshirts, jackets, bedding, any socks, stuff, any soft goods.
I mean, you really have three nice green initiatives there, you know, one is, I know it's silly, but the wireless urinals, obviously, and the amount of sewage going to Brockton is something that Abington's been struggling with, that helps there, that's green. The textile recycling is also that green piece, and then, the recycling of those toner cartridges, I just want to say this, and that's how I got on this, back in the day, when those were put into place, that was what you did, and that was the thing to do, and so, this upgrade needs to take place.
And that was cheap, I mean, that was an inexpensive way to print.
The way to do it.
Yep.
And so, this comes with improved technology. It's not like we, you know, put this system in place before at twenty-five cents a page in a way that was frivolous. It's just that now that the technology has been upgraded, we want to keep up with it and provide a better product, a greener product, a more efficient product.
Were you gonna talk about mosquitoes?
I am, under information. You can talk about it now, if people want to.
I was gonna talk about spraying, if you want me to?
Oh, do you mind if I jump in then? Mosquitoes, because that's why we're spraying, or why Plymouth County's spraying. So, people may be aware that we sent a couple of, we sent an email out warning that we have had a, there's actually a woman passed away in Weymouth from Eastern Equina Encephalitis, we had a recommendation from the Health Department based on that, that we implement the restrictions dusk till dawn. We've done that with all of our sports teams and all of our activities in the Avenue of Public Schools. Just so you know, I also bring this over, or we emailed to St. Bridget's, so they're aware of what we're doing. I don't know what their evening activities are, this restriction isn't for them, they make the decision what they want to do, but I always make sure that they get our safety notices. And we sent a letter home with people today, just because we're thinking is, this is, if you don't have email, you're not hooked onto our systems, we don't want to miss the opportunity to keep you informed about something this important, because we're in, we're on three sides. We've got towns that are in a high-risk area for triple E, and we say that mosquitoes don't know where the town line is. If they're in the three towns around us, they are probably in Abington also, so.
So, through Plymouth County mosquito control, we can request having our fields sprayed for mosquitoes, and we have done that. We had one spraying this past week, and we will continue to request spraying from them throughout the fall season. It doesn't preclude you from using bug spray and making good decisions. As Peter said, we can't control whether youth sports continue to be out on the fields, we can control what the Avenue of Public Schools do, so please know that just, but spraying alone does not keep mosquitoes from being on our fields, but it helps us keep it, keep it down. And the spraying is safe for us to be on the, they spray overnight, and by daybreak, everything's safe for us to be back on for, for our regular school activities.
When we request them to spray, do they spray just one field, like, say, Memorial Field, or do they spray all of, like, behind the high school?
You request the area that you'd like sprayed, they spray in the middle of the night. We, I have, when I did the request last week, it was around the Woodsdale School, around Center School, all fields associated with Frollo and Beaverbrook, playgrounds, and then all the high school fields.
And what it really does is knocks the population down temporarily, so it slows the spread of the disease amongst the mosquito population. I know more about entomology and mosquitoes than I ever thought I would know as a superintendent of schools.
Thank you.
Oh, MSBA.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Do you want, I'm gonna talk about it.
Yes, you.
Yeah. A little over a year ago, we started our School Building Committee for our MSBA feasibility study, and they've been working hard, it's a twenty-one-member committee, and especially, I think, over the, the summer, it's noteworthy to say that, you know, a good amount of people met weekly to keep this project on task, and we're almost at the end of the first step, almost like a three-step process, and we will be having a, the School Building Committee will be meeting after Labor Day.
Right?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday after Labor Day.
Yep.
To narrow down the proposals, and then, that will be brought to a joint committee from the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee together on September ninth here, public welcome to attend, and then, the third week in September, we'll be on track to submit the feasibility study to the MSBA. And again, I think the work to be, is to be commended for the, the working group that over the summer met almost weekly, which is a lot.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. New business, starting of next school committee meeting, our next school committee is Tuesdays... Our next school committee is Tuesdays, September twenty-fourth at seven P M. And prior to that, we do have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on September ninth. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, in, in your packet, you've got the school calendar. Michael, nope, that was it.
So, we need to go to your journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a job, Michael?
Is that one more? Do you know how to shut it off, Felicia?
I do.